This 25th, 2020 city council meeting to order and call on Claudia to do a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Drapkin?
Present.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Sorry, I was having problems with my mute. I am here.
No worries. Counselor Stassenz?
Here.
Council President Minky?
She was on the prior call, maybe having problems getting in again, so we'll keep an eye out.
Counselor Geary is absent this evening, and Mayor Hill?
And I'm here. Again, thank you, and we welcome councillors, staff, and those that are with us on the line, and those that will be watching the proceedings over our YouTube and MCM broadcasting of that. This evening, we're going to start with a presentation, and that presentation is on the Recology Rate Review. And Jennifer, I think you're going to be presenting that to us this evening, and so go ahead.
Yeah, this evening. Hello, everyone. I was really, really pleased to get word from Moody's that after looking at our financials through last year, through fiscal year 19, that our stable, that we were stable enough that we retained our AA3 rating, and there was no outlook indicated, so not a downward trend was noted. So that was very nice to see, given the level of uncertainty that we're facing these days. I think it's also really important and timely, the work that's happening in the Audit Committee currently, to be taking a good look at how we approach reserves and our fund balance. And to that end, we actually are having our third discussion on the topic tomorrow morning at 9:00. So really look forward to bringing the results of those conversations to you guys as a full council, hopefully in September. But anyways.
Jennifer, sorry to interrupt. The mayor's actually asking you to introduce the Recology Rate Review item, and you sort of jumped ahead to department report. Sorry about that.
Oh, gosh. I apologize.
But we like that report, because we know there are good things happening at the Audit Committee. Thank you, Jeff and Jennifer. And if I were to read more closely, I think, in reality, I think, Jennifer, I'll take you off the hook, and I'll just call on Carl Peters, the Recology General Manager, to present directly. And so that was my error. So sorry, Jennifer, for catching you sideways. So again, we have a presentation this evening on the Recology Rate Review, and that's in anticipation that we have a resolution coming up later tonight. So Carl, welcome. It's good to have you in front of us. And again, you're going to make a presentation in preparation for our resolution to be had later in the meeting tonight.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. I was actually thinking that was probably one of the longest introductions I've ever gotten. I was kind of excited where it was going next. I feel like there's a story now that I'm going to hear later, so I'm going to have to hang in there for the rest. So Mayor Hill, councillors, staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. These are certainly unusual times. But before I go any further, I want to make sure that I express to you how proud all the employee owners at Recology are to be of service to the city of McMinnville. Serving the city, it's a real privilege, and we take that privilege seriously. So I want to start off to give a quick update on our COVID response to date and follow-up of notes we sent out earlier this year. Our offices remain closed to the public, but customers can reach us by phone and by email. Most of our office staff are working from home now. At the McMinnville Transfer Station, employees and customers are directed to wear masks. We are currently only taking payments using credit cards and debit cards. Our drivers have all the supplies they need in order to protect themselves. For them, we've eliminated in-person meetings, staggered start times where we could, limited building access where we could, and require masks when indoors or in close contact with others. Our employee owners understand the essential nature of their work and its importance to this community. Through all of this, I think honestly, they've just been real heroes, and I could be prouder of all of them. They continue to show up every day and get the job done. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I think all the residents have been respectful, courteous, and polite as well. So that's just been nice, given the challenges. When this crisis started, we did reach out to staff to remind you that you would know that you could count on Recology. We are your partners in good times and then, you know, in these not-so-good times. We understood the pressure this situation was going to bear on our neighbors, and we made sure that service continued to all residents. No services were put on hold due to payments status during the big shutdown. We want to assure you that if residents are dealing with COVID-related challenges, we will work with them to ensure that everyone can continue to receive service at home. No one wants trash to pile up during a public health crisis, so we will do everything we can there to make sure that continues. And this pandemic, it's had serious impacts on the residents and all the businesses. We share the pain. I think I can speak for all of us that our hope is that these impacts are temporary. At the peak of the stay-at-home order, commercial volumes dropped by over 20%. Debris box was down for a short time, but it's starting to come back as more hotels, business, and constructions has reopened. But when we looked at April through July, commercial front-load tons were down 16% from the same time in 2019. Debris box tons were down 28%. And carted tons, you know, like the carts at home, or you might see behind a restaurant, at some of those restaurants, those tons were up 17%. And I think that reflects a lot of people staying at home, ordering takeout, I think. Overall, though, total tons were down 5%. A question no one's asked yet, and the answer to that is yes, you're recycling, is still being recycled. Unfortunately, it's not that case everywhere, and so news stories from other areas have caused some confusion for our customers. And I've been asked, how much is being thrown away? And the answer is still the same, just material that should not have been in that recycle cart in the first place. So, you know, diapers and hoses and swing sets, you know, just things that don't make too much sense. But recycling volume is down about 7%. And in our estimation, this kind of makes sense with some large producers, like schools, that have been shut down for much of the year. Yard debris tons are up 13%, and from what we've heard, it has been a great growing season out there. Not for my beefsteak tomatoes, but it's been a great growing season, and folks have spent more time at home working on landscaping projects. Styrofoam's still happening, by the way. I think we got nearly seven tons diverted last year. And again, I think I told you at the time, if we had a great year, we would move seven to nine tons. Again, that may not seem like a lot, but I promise that was a bunch of space in the landfill. So I think that is great work, and again, another leading thing that we do here in McMinnville. We continue to support the community through sponsorship donations and in-kind services. For example, the Third Street Promotion Boxes, we will continue to get those out at no cost to support the community's restaurants. I think what the city has done to make that street available so people can dine in the street is just wonderful, and I'm happy to see that it's continuing. And again, we'll continue to support that as best as we can. And although we've kind of reduced some of the amount of giving with the current business climate, we will continue to support nearly 30 regional charities that benefit McMinnville and its residents. So going back to the rates, regarding rates, back in April, we requested that the effective date be deferred until September, and that was in order to minimize impacts for our community during the stay-at-home orders when things were so chaotic. With the submission of the detailed financial models and the third-party financial reviews, we're asking for your consideration for those deferred rates to be effective September 1, with this TPI change in the amount of 2.9%. Looking at this from a residential standpoint, the impact on home collection rates would be $1.32 a month, or 79 cents per month for the most popular residential services. We will remind residents, we offer 14 different levels of service to customize their needs based on their ability to recycle and divert. We will remind everyone, if it grows, it can go into that yard waste bin, like if your tomatoes didn't work out at all, like my beefsteak ones. I've got to stop talking about that. We will remind these residents without curbside yard waste bin, there's no additional cost to get that cart at the curb, and hopefully that will create even more opportunity to reduce container size or frequency of collection. Now, some rates aren't changing, such as medical waste, service fees, resume fees, all those kind of fees. Those are not changing, and the only other change we're proposing is the debris box ton rates for those large temporary boxes you see at construction sites and some large businesses, and that would be to adjust those rates, the amount of the change of the tithes at the disposal sites. Now, I do want to note that, you know, we haven't been back in front of you for 15 months, 14, 15 months. So one of the other requests was to move the ask dates to September, and that just lines up a little bit better. You know, giving up those months is okay. If it generates a bill, that's a lot easier to read for the residents. And so we wanted to make it all line up, so it looked a little bit cleaner and made more sense for everybody. So again, we are very proud to be your service provider, in good times and bad. We look forward to celebrating with you, once we can all do that in public again together. But that's all I have prepared, and I'm happy to take questions, as long as it's not about raising tomatoes.
Carl, thank you for that report. I will open it up for councillors. Any questions for Carl and his request? Again, we will have discussion later in our meeting tonight as we consider Resolution 2020-53. But any questions while Carl's on the line? Doesn't look like we have any further questions, Carl. Thank you. And again, the requests that come through, that's a part of our packet. That now takes us to comments from our citizens and anyone who wishes to speak on a topic other than an item that's in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Please, we will give you three minutes to address the council. You can raise your hand in the future in Zoom, and Claudia will recognize you. Once you're announced, please state your name and address for the record. Remember to unmute your mic so that you can be heard. Claudia, I think we have two individuals that would like to speak tonight on a topic that will come up later, and so I'll ask you if this is the time that we want to do that.
Mayor, we have Brittany Reese here, wanting to talk on citizen comment.
Okay, Brittany, welcome.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, Brittany. Welcome this evening.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Hill and members of the council. This is Brittany from Ward 2, and I prefer not to give my address. I hope that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, great. I'm actually calling today, even though I am running for city council, I'm calling specifically as a citizen and a resident. I'm calling because I was surprised by the agenda being updated last night and amended to have two particular items added, and I'm of the belief that the urban growth boundary is a very highly contentious and important discussion, and I believe the residents should be given due process and at least given a week's notice, not 24 hours. A special session was not called, so I'm unsure how the council can add items to a public meeting the day before, and the charter does not clarify this point. I'm asking for understanding on why or how this can be introduced with so little notification. Second point, many residents and businesses are nervous and scared about any further regulations, fees, and rate increases. I'm requesting from the city to go above and beyond. If this is being entertained, to do more to inform the citizens and to not give any rate increase at this time. I'm also wanting to get clarification on why our rates are going up again. Thank you for listening, and if my councillors want to give input now or email on this, I would really greatly appreciate it. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. I'll turn that over to Jeff and have a member of the staff reach out to possibly address her concerns. Jeff, can you make sure that happens?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, let's see, Claudia has Mark Davis. I know that he's given us written testimony on the rate increase for Recology tonight. Does Mark want to address this in the citizens' comment this evening?
Mayor, he said he can address it during the agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Council President Minky is on the line now.
Right, and we'll make mention of that, so it's on the record. This now takes us to our next item of business tonight, which is advice and information. And so we will take reports from our councillors on committee and board assignments. And so I'll just go across the top, and I've got, Remy, I've got you first. Would you like to make a report to the council on your assignments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force meets at 10:00 a.m. We have a very full and very interesting agenda, and so I encourage everybody to tune in, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Adam, next?
I don't have anything to add, other than our Jet A tank is supposed to be operational out at the airport.
Thank you, Adam. Sal? I'll come back. I'll come back to Sal. Wendy?
I have nothing to report this time. Our next MURAC meeting is the first Wednesday of the month, so it's just around the corner, so I'll have something to report next meeting.
Sorry, Mayor. I was launching into my report and on mute again, so can I butt back into line?
Yeah, so Wendy's completed. Thank you, Wendy. Sal, go ahead.
Sorry, Wendy. Yeah, this is actually a fairly significant report for folks who are local businesses. The Willamette Workforce Partnership has reopened. It's workforce grants for, business grants for businesses in Marion, Polk, and Yenhill counties. This was just announced, or at least I just became aware of it yesterday, Monday, and the grants are open from yesterday through August 31. And businesses that are headquartered in Oregon with 25 or fewer employees that are either for-profit or nonprofit, that have had a decline in sales and revenue for the months of March and April, are eligible for these grants if they did not receive funding through the Paycheck Protection Program, Small Business Administration Loans, and other similar programs. So I will post that actually on Facebook after the meeting to the McMinnville Community Discussions page, just so businesses have that. And then I was wondering, I was unable to make a meeting two times ago, and I was wondering if we had an update on the grants that the city is allocating.
Let me take a look. Heather is on a well-deserved vacation this week.
Scott?
Yes?
I think they're still putting the information out. This is Kelly. I think they're still just putting the information out. They haven't started collecting applications.
And Jeff, you can update us. I know that we have a due date, a fast turnaround of 45 days, but Jeff, if you'd update us?
Yes, the program is being marketed right now. We're working really hard to get the information out to as many people as we can. We'll be accepting applications August 31 through September 4. So we have a five-day period for applications to be submitted. And there are links to that on the city's website. I will follow up in a few minutes with the web address during my report.
Okay. I also know that MEDP and the Chamber have sent that information out in their broadcast. I know that the Economic Vitality Committee is working on that, and they're going to have a group, a subcommittee, that are going to be able to work through those applications to help make those decisions. And so again, we felt it was more important to get the message out so people could make application, and then we're going to have a very quick turnaround on that. Let's see. Wendy?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I forgot that I had missed our previous meeting, so I didn't give you an update on, MURAC has actually had approved doing a grant, a special grant, to help the community, the businesses downtown, to do work to freshen up their facades, so part of the regular facade improvement program. In our last meeting, the beginning of this month, we did start reviewing applications for that. We have more coming in, so that form of funds is being distributed by MURAC currently. And so we're in the process of reviewing applications for that, and we expect to review more of them in our next meeting. So sorry about, I missed that. I forgot I wasn't here in our previous meeting to give that update.
Thank you, Wendy. And then I'll go to Council President Minky. Kelly?
Am I on?
You are.
Okay, good. There was no Visit McMinnville meeting this month. As Remy's already stated, the Affordable Housing Task Force is adjourned tomorrow. Have not, because they're broadcasting the information, we haven't heard anything from the Economic Vitality Leadership Committee, but I'm on the group that will be reviewing them, the grants, so it'll be interesting to see how that turns out. And I think that's really pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Kelly. In my business news, I talked about having the opportunity to be on the governor's call yesterday, and we were talking about the incidences of COVID and how it relates to schools, specifically K-3. We have some that are, some counties, I think there's 15 counties, are going to be able to have K-3 classes, but the 4-12 are the ones that we're really hurting. And even though we are at a plateau, we're quite a ways away from where we want to go. Tomorrow, I'll be involved in a mayor's conference with Congresswoman Bonamici, where we'll have an opportunity to share our thoughts and our needs as it relates to the federal government. I'll not be able to go to Affordable Housing Task Force. And then I just wanted to shout out that tomorrow, and I think it's Thursday, we have four individuals that have applied for opportunities to serve on MURAC, and so we'll be doing interviews for that group, and then make a determination who will serve with us there. Now go and ask for Department head's reports, and I'll just go across to Amanda. Anything that you would have for us this evening, Amanda?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, I know that a part of our packets, we have the Cash and Investment Report, and also the Moody's Annual Comments in our packet. And then, as you mentioned, tomorrow, the Audit Committee continues to meet, and Kelly and I, and Peter will be a part of that. So you're on.
Yeah, so now should I give you news about Recology, just to kind of balance things out, right? So apologies for the gap. I was just getting some. I thought the only thing I have on is the Moody's. So anyways, obviously, I'm very excited about how well the city did on that, and if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to reach out. I can talk ad nauseam about these kinds of things. So have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Jennifer. Scott Burke, do you have anything from IT? Thank you, Scott. Let's go over to... I'm gonna, is, I know Jenny was trying to get on. Is she on?
No, Mayor, but I did want to follow up on Counselor Peralta's Willamette Workforce. I actually have that posted on our COVID-19 resources page, so that is already out there on our city webpage if people want to take a look at it and get more information.
Thank you, Claudia, and thanks for keeping us updated on getting that type of information out to our citizens. I'll come back around, and Jeff, anything to share with us, a report from you?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items, just to follow up to the Business Assistance Program a few minutes ago. The website is www.maccbusinessassistance.com. So businesses who are interested in exploring that Business Assistance Program that's funded in part by the city of McMinnville and in part by a grant from Business Oregon can find the information there. And again, applications will be accepted August 31 through September 4. Kylie and I and other staff are continuing to work on a subsequent draft of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Social Justice Plan that we discussed last month at a council work session. Our plan is to have that out for council review later this week. Kylie will have a more substantial report at the next council meeting, specifically about training opportunities for staff and council. And then last item, our family had planned a brief family time off for a long weekend. The person to whom I'm related by marriage and one of the persons to whom I'm related by parentage were not able to get time off, so we won't be doing that. But I will be doing a staycation Friday through Monday, so I'll be out of the office and trying not to check email Friday through Monday for a long weekend. I'll probably just be doing a lot of projects around the house, and that's all I have to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. Jeff, could you give me that URL again, please?
Yes, Counselor Peralta, www.maccbusinessassistance...
Thank you. Dot com?
Dot com, yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that now takes us to our consent agenda for this evening. And on our consent agenda, Resolution 2020-52 and a request for an OLCC. Is there any councillor that would request to have items moved off of the consent agenda and moved back onto the regular agenda this evening? Seeing no motion, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Sal moved?
Second.
It was been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda this evening passes unanimously 5 to 0. We have a request to permit a waiver for noise ordinance for Mr. Smart for September 26, 2020. I'll call on Jeff to present that topic.
Thank you, Mayor, and as the council. Mr. Smart is a board director for the Portland Karting Association. They are requesting nighttime go-kart race on Saturday, September 26, from noon to 10:30 p.m. The city's municipal code section 8.10.260 addresses requests for waivers of our noise limitations after hours. There's no particular fiscal impact. We do periodically grant these requests. If the council chooses to vote in favor of a motion allowing this waiver, we'll correspond with Mr. Smart, and we have let him know that our expectation is that they will be providing advance notice to affected neighbors. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jeff on this? And I see that Mike Shorn is on, and I think he represents the Go-Kart Association also, so we might be able to ask him if we have very specific questions. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
And I don't know that this is necessarily the exact time and place for this question, but it just occurred to me, so no better time to ask it. As we're looking at events that might draw larger crowds and trying to encourage and maintain a safe and healthy environment for our community. If we are, if we are needing to evaluate other sorts of if we're reevaluating other criteria, are we also at this time applying any additional or extraordinary criteria in regards to what our community expects in terms of safety and how we're complying with with higher orders for safety related to COVID-19?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Drapkin. The city's not in a position of implementing or enforcing any of the governor's executive orders or the state's rules about social distancing, PPE, that sort of thing. We do have access to that information and make that information available to people who make applications for particular permits. As an example, the street closures and utilization of off-street or on-street parking for certain restaurant and tasting room activities. We make that information available and let folks know where they can go to answer question, to ask questions about those those requirements, and and we let people know that the other regulatory entities that are interested in these sorts of processes are great resources for guidance in the event that folks do have questions. So we do encourage that, we don't set specific requirements because those requirements have been set at the state level.
Okay, and then just as one follow up, if we're if we're making any additional allowances, are we carrying any additional liability with allowing those?
We don't believe so. I can turn to Amanda to see if she has any additional information or perspective on that. We did, we did do work with the city's insurance company and agent of record early in the season when these issues started to come up, and we felt comfortable providing guidance consistent with what I recommended. It may be that Jennifer can provide additional information as well. She was part of the process of engaging our agent of record and our insurance company on a variety of issues.
Amanda, do you?
I thought Jeff did a great job covering that.
Okay, great.
Well, with that kind of sideline out of the, out of the way, and thank you for your answers, I don't have any additional questions, nor do I see any problems with the noise waiver request.
And I I know Mike's on, and so I'm just going to reach out and and in that Counselor Drapkin asked, do you have a sense of how many will be in attendance, Mike, at your, your event?
Thank you, Mayor. We typically between 50 to 60 entries, sometimes more, sometimes less, in the past history. This year, our numbers have been pretty good the first race, but since the COVID, it's been about an average 30 to 40, so we're hoping for a good turnout, but I know we will be well within the boundaries of the state mandate of, I think, less than 100.
Yes. And and that's what, that's what I was getting to, Mike, and and the Counselor Drapkin is in yesterday's update with the the governor, again, reminding us that events that would be 100 or less would be appropriate. But again, we would truly ask for masks to be worn, social distancing, and those types of precautions, and that's what the state has given us from that perspective.
And we have already, we've taken those precautions already and presented those signs and we provide masks for anybody that doesn't have them, and we ensure that everybody stays their distance unless they're in their own private pit. And we space out the pit areas. We also provide or ensure that our, we make our counts. If there's more, we, we only at this time limit the 100 people so that it's just the driver and one pick crew. If it's less than that, then we allow other people to come in, but we pretty much we only allow for the drivers and one pick person first, and then after that, we allow for more, but we try to, we limit our, our numbers to the 100.
Okay, thank you. And then can I ask, you have been asking for this waiver, and what year are you in that you've been holding these events here in McMinnville?
The track was built in 99, so we've been almost 20 years now.
Yes, I know, I knew there was some longevity to that. Any other questions for Mike from the council?
I have one.
Go ahead, Wendy.
And this might not be for Mike. In, when we request that the neighbors are notified, do we give specific instructions? And then if neighbors have concerns, how are they handled? Is it just notification of the neighbors by letter or remind me what we have done in the past and what we would be doing along with this?
So we haven't, we haven't been specific about the method of notification, only that affected neighbors are notified, so we leave it up to the applicant. And some applicants, for, for instance, for the Walnut City Music Festival, when it was in the Granary District, Ossi essentially walked the neighborhood and left flyers and knocked on doors. So we leave it up to the applicants to do that outreach.
Okay, and have we ever gotten, what kind of feedback do we get directly from those other waivers that we've given? Have we ever gotten concerns from citizens?
In the handful of waivers that we have granted in my time here, I'm not aware of any feedback that we've gotten as a result of the prior notice. There have been a few times that we've gotten complaints about, about noise activities.
And I know that we have the apartments that are directly across the street at Lafayette. Those are newer builds and and, but I think those have been on the market now for two or three, or three or four years, and so I, I know those would be the ones that would be most directly affected by the noise.
Mike, what, how do you think you would reach out to the neighbors to fulfill that requirement?
Well, this is our more, our biggest plan was to use the Reader Board that Fairgrounds allows us to use. So that's directly for the apartments right there, and that would be give them a week or two notice as the Fairgrounds allows us to use it. We hadn't planned on using any flyers, but I, if need be, I guess we could do that. Usually in the, in the past, we have not really done much other than the Reader Board. And we've had, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I, I'm wondering if, if, you know, Jeff, if we could look in if we've received any complaints in, you know, the last two years would give us a real indication that the Reader Board has worked or not. If we're, if we're getting complaints, I think we might need to look at a more direct approach to notification, but and I just, I can't think off the top of my head, Jeff, that we've had reported complaints in this arena, in, in for this event, which would show to me that the Reader Board has been effective of getting the message out.
We, we can check on that, but as, as you recall, Mayor, I, I don't recall any complaints either.
Right.
Any more questions?
Okay, any further questions for Mike? Okay, what, what, this isn't a resolution, this is just going to be a request for a permit to waive the noise ordinance. And so I think I'll just get a sense of going around. Wendy, what would your?
We, we would ask for a motion granting the waiver if the council's inclined to do that, please.
Thank you, Jeff.
A motion does grant the waiver.
Okay, and Adam and Remy? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, please indicate by saying nay. The waiver has passed five to zero. Thank you, Mike, for being with us and for our discussion, and you can move forward with your event.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it and look forward to being good neighbors.
Absolutely, thank you. This takes us to Item 7A this evening, which is a Resolution 2020-53, a resolution of the City of McMinnville approving a collection rate increase not to exceed 2.9% for Recology Incorporated. And before I get, before I get going and call on Amanda to present, I would turn the, turn some time over to Counselor Peralta to make a statement. Sal? Sal, you're still on mute.
Sorry, Mayor, third time's a charm. I just wanted to declare a potential conflict of interest, which is that I do statewide policy work with Zero Waste McMinnville. Recology is a financial supporter of Zero Waste McMinnville, so I would like to recuse myself from this deliberation out of an abundance of caution.
Okay, thank you, Sal, for that, that. And so at this point, I'll call on our city attorney, Amanda, to present for our discussion before the council. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the record, City Attorney Amanda Guile Hinman. Tonight, the council is considering Resolution Number 2020-53, which, if approved, will increase Recology Inc.'s service rates for providing solid waste and recycling collection services by 2.9%. The city's franchise agreement with Recology generally requires that a rate adjustment be implemented each July 1, according to the rate provided by the Consumer Price Index outlined in the franchise agreement. On April 1st, Recology requested a 2.9% rate increase based on the CPI data released in March 2020, showing a 2.9% increase over the last year. However, Recology also proposed delaying that rate increase to September 1 instead of July 1 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. If approved, the rate increase is projected to provide Recology with a 10.92% operating margin, which is within the range outlined in the franchise agreement of a 9% to 15% operating margin. It is city staff's opinion that Recology has met the standards in the franchise agreement to support its rate request, particularly considering the unique economic uncertainty that COVID-19 presents. Included in your packet materials are the April 1, 2020 requests from Recology, including its rate review report and 2019 reviewed financial statement, as well as its request on July 31, 2020 for the rate increase effective September 1, 2020, along with the attached proposed service rate sheet. To the extent I can, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council, but I may also defer to Recology staff to answer any questions specific to the rate increase request. Thanks.
Thank you, and so we'll open that up for discussion among the council. I know that we have Mark Davis, who has sent each of us a, a letter of concern that he has, and that has been put into the record this evening, and Mark requested just to be able to speak to the council. And we've asked that to happen during this, this discussion time. So Mark, we'll give you three minutes to just solidify your written remarks to us, so go ahead, Mark, if you would, and then we'll have a council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've submitted some written comments already, hopefully you've had a chance to read them. My concern here is really related to a long, longstanding concern I've had with that there's simply no calculation showing the basis for the 2.9% rate increase. I made my best effort to go out to the Consumer Price Index called for in the, the franchise agreement, find those numbers, and I've provided you with my calculation, which shows the number should actually be 2.5%. I, you know, I don't know whether I'm right or not, quite honestly, but I just, I don't think it's the responsibility of citizens or even of staff to be doing the calculations. I think those calculations should be made by Recology, and they should be made public so citizens and the council and staff can look at them and see if they're correct. I, I, at this point, believe there's evidence in the record to justify approval of this resolution and would ask you to either reduce it to 2.5% or have Recology bring it back with more information so that we can review it and see if it is correct. I've spoken on these issues several times in the past, and, you know, it's, I'm not here to try to harass Recology. I, I support the services they provide as Mr. Peters explained the things they do in the community, I don't have a problem with that. I just believe that they are a monopoly, and the city council has a legal responsibility to make certain that they are following the terms of the franchise agreement. I personally don't believe they are. You had a secret study done by an accounting firm that I've never been allowed to look at that supposedly showed that they were not in violation. But I, I just think this whole process is unfair to the citizens and needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for your input and for your thoughtful written testimony to the council, and we received that early enough to be able to review that prior to tonight. So from a council perspective, this is a discussion that we've had before, and I just opened it up for for council to have discussion. Carl is still on the line, if you would have questions of, of Carl, so go ahead.
I need?
Go ahead, go ahead, Adam.
My first question would be for Amanda on how the franchise agreement's written. If they were currently showing a 9% operating margin and not the 8.89%, would they be eligible for a rate increase, or would they have to wait another calendar year?
The way the franchise agreement reads is basically if they fall within that 9% to 15% operating margin, they can ask for their rate increase based on the CPI. Generally speaking, what, from what I can tell from in the past is if, is that they have requested out-of-sequence requests when they know that their rates are going to fall under the 9%, either due to tipping fee increases, or, like I said, with the recycling market crash, basically, they have the ability to do an out-of-sequence request, which they have done in the past.
Okay, so even if they're showing a 9.5, they could still come for that CPI this year?
Correct.
And then second question for you would be they changed which month they were comparing the CPI for? And in the franchise agreement, they're supposed to use April and May? But they're using March, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as far as like setting a precedent?
And I should, right, and I actually would probably ask Carl. It would, I'm assuming it'd be helpful for the council to have Carl explain how that calculation was done, because when we say, when when the franchise agreement talks about looking at May to April and the changeover, and then there is a discussion about the March data, that doesn't mean data that existed as of March. I'm assuming it's probably data that was a little bit earlier than March, that was published in March. So I'd actually ask Carl if he could chime in on that for the council and explain that a little bit more.
Carl, we'll call on you to answer that. Okay, you're on.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and staff at council to comment on, on his, Mr. Davis's comments there. You know, regarding his letter, I think I'll, I'll try to touch on as much as I can in a short period. You know, first thing I'd say is I think his math is generally accurate. I think a lot of his comments are actually generally accurate. I just need to clarify a few things. Again, he talks about a 2.5 versus 2.9, I mean, I mean, I wouldn't stress too much about that. But again, I'm not speeding his math. However, we submitted February data, which is 2.9. You know, he used March, we're using February, in March, we only have access to February. So that's, that's the anomaly he's seeing, he's using March. Our calculated CPI is 2.9, and that is what we submitted, just, that's the explanation, it was just a different starting point. I think the other thing I want to make sure that I do talk about, since it was in his letter, is that 31% 31.6% letter, is that thirty-one per six, thirty-one point six percent rate increase since twenty seventeen. I'm looking here, but you're there, so I'm going to shift my position, I feel kind of weird. That thirty-six percent rate increase since twenty seventeen. Again, I'm not disputing his math, but any suggestion that this was in deference to CPI or some kind of adjustment to CPI is not accurate. I think we all know, but let me recount what those changes were. The city requested the addition of yard waste and glass collection in twenty sixteen, and then valuable service to the residents that did impact rates approximately ten percent, but that also included the franchise fee adjustment covering that timeframe that he mentioned. If you remember when we passed that as a company, we split it up into three pieces. So some hit in sixteen, but then the rest of it started hitting in seventeen as we spread that out. In response to the city requesting to move all the trash out of the river land, River Bend landfill, which positions the city for a long-term success, was a brave and good decision, but that also impacted rates ten percent to make that move. Finally, the China National Sword impacting recycling across the country and adding styrofoam collection and the transportation for it adjusted the rates one more time at ten and a half. So that covers all of those. It wasn't a CPI workaround. Service changed dramatically and services were added, and that's why, in my opinion, you can't, you shouldn't be trying to compare it to the CPI. It's apples and oranges on that. Lastly, one thing that I want to make sure I talk about, as Mr. Davis suggested, that when the company was owned locally, somehow things were different, they were more public. Dave Larmouth, who's on this call, was the rate analyst responsible for building all the rate packets and the information provided to the city as part of public record back in those days. Dave, as you can see, still works with us. Dave literally uses the same spreadsheet and includes all the affiliated corporate entities, and we still submit third-party financial reviews. That's so the fox isn't watching the hen house, as it were. This is all consistent with all the old practice. The detailed financials that we provide tie out to the spreadsheets that we provide, which drives the rates. And one thing that I failed to mention my presentation to, and I've just admitted to jam it in, that with the approval of the two point nine request, we won't submit a new rate review request until twenty twenty-two. But we'd be happy to, of course, as we do every year, share the financials in March of twenty twenty-one.
Eric, you're muted. Carl, thank you for that explanation and shedding more light on the increases since two thousand and sixteen. Again, I remember the glass containers, River Bend, and the, you know, the down, the downturn in the recycling market, we've talked about that. We've also, the styrofoam now, we have that collection, which is even a part of that. So let's go back to council and see if there's specific questions. Adam, did that answer your specific question?
Uh, yeah, I have some others, but I'll let other counselors go.
Okay, and we'll come back to you. Wendy, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I have a question, probably maybe starting with Carl. Carl, one other aspect of Mark's letter was less ability transparency with regards to how numbers are calculated. Has something changed with regards to that in more recent years? And is there any way that we can provide more transparency in how numbers are calculated?
Carl, you're muted.
Yeah, somebody unmuted me last time, I felt like I was being... ...getting appropriate service that I would expect from the city of McMinnville. So this is going to make Dave sound old, but he predates most of us on your question, Wendy, so we can defer some of that to him. I can say that in my discussion with Dave, as I mentioned, everything that we provide is consistent with how it was done back then. Dave is the guy that put, when, when it was Western Oregon Waste, Dave Larmouth was the guy that put those rates together. And those detailed sheets and those detailed financials, they tie together to show expenses and revenues and shows the, you know, the operating ratio and what the requested changes impact is on those rates, because the rates will adjust to give that operating ratio. But, you know, Dave, is there any more light that you can shed on it? Because it's a, it's a pretty kind of open book process.
That's, that's true. For the record, Dave Larmouth, rate analyst for Recology, Western Oregon, and I think Carl has hit the high points. When we did the outside audit process last year, we, we got into quite a bit of detail with the folks that the city hired to explain to them how we do the series of calculations that, that become the, the cost of service model. And the, the part that you see is the, it's two pages, and on your, on your sheet, if you're, if you're working from left to right on the sheet, we have the, the collection, the Valley Collection Company is a, is a legal subsidiary. It's the company that, that pays the drivers and, and operates the trucks that, that collect the material. And so we provide the calendar year actual for the collection company. That match, those numbers match up to the review financial statements that are submitted along with the, the rate. And we make a projection for the upcoming rate year, again, for the, for the Valley Collection Company. And then we indicate which allocation methods we'll use to share the costs for each line item. And then the next columns show, specific for the city of McMinnville, what the actual revenue was for the previous calendar year, what those allocated expenses were for McMinnville. And then the final column shows our projections specific to McMinnville for what we think revenue will be and what we think the expenses will be connected to that revenue. And so as you work your way down that, that sheet, when you get to page two, we indicate what those allocation factors are and what percentage of the total McMinnville represents. So just to pick out an example, so medical waste, McMinnville represents eighty-seven percent of, of the medical waste expense that we incur and that's primarily due because, to the, the hospital and their, and their related operations. So all of the other communities that we serve from our Valley Collection Company make up the, the remaining thirteen point oh five percent, some, a math number that adds up to a hundred. And then we, we also indicate the, the operating ratio calculations that, that we use. So as, as Carl said, this, this basic process hasn't changed during the time that I've been here, and I started doing this all the time in two thousand and, I was involved in the process for three or four years prior to that. The, the details have changed. The, the biggest changes that I would say is about five or six years ago, we switched to a, using a different third-party review company. So we, we did, we used, I've forgotten their name, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, Big Perrin McMillan and Miller, I believe was their name. And we changed to a different company, Armonia, the folks that, that provide them currently. And the other change since the acquisition was that Recology has regional and corporate management services available to us that when Western Oregon Waste was an independent company, they didn't, they didn't have. So we, Western Oregon Waste had a local human resources person and a local environmental person and a local IT person, either on staff or as, as a contractor. And now Recology has those regional and, and corporate services available to us. We still pay those, those costs out of the same three and nine percent of revenue that, that we, that is called for in the franchise agreement. And so the, the difference from the collection company perspective i- is really quite small compared, if, when you're looking at how does Recology operate now and how did Western Oregon Waste operate prior to two thousand and nine.
And, and so, Dave, I have a question. As you talk about having to have contract services with local companies when it was Western Waste, are there economies of scale that Recology can bring to bear compared to independently going out and having those services performed locally? Can you remember, are the costs pretty across the board the same? Are there, are there economies of scale because they're in-house and they really know what they're doing and they're being able to maximize their efforts with, with less people and thus, less cost to you?
I, I would presume so. I couldn't pretend to quantify that for you, but for example, we get a better deal on tires because Recology buys lots of tires all up and down the West Coast. So we may not be buying the exact same kind of tires that Western Oregon Waste may have bought. Maybe we're buying better quality tires that last, last longer, so they, but we presumably have, get a better deal on tires in general because Recology buys a lot more tires than Western Oregon Waste ever did separately. We can, we can talk about how we might dig into the, those numbers in greater detail, but that's, that's about, that's as, as far as I could go with you live here on the call.
Yeah, without digging in. Again, my business sense would say that when you are in-house and you do have the economies of scale and the buying power and the expertise, it should, in reality, save our citizens compared to having to go out and have contracts, even though they're local and it stays within the community, there should be some economies of scale there. Wendy, I think you were the one that started this discussion. Are your questions answered?
I actually have a, an additional question, but I think Jeff wanted to comment on something. And I'm fine with coming back to me.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Stassen, I wanted to clarify for the public record a comment that Mr. Davis made. He made reference to a secret study by some accountant. What in fact happened is that, based on a request from Mr. Davis, the city retained its independent auditor, Marina and Company, to conduct a rate review of Recology. Recology submitted financial data to Marina. They did an independent review. Their charge was to ensure that the calculations and the data that Recology presented to the city were full and accurate and complete, that their calculations were done consistent with the requirements in the city's franchise agreement with Recology, and that the methodology for applying corporate overhead was consistent and appropriate. Much of the information that was presented by Recology to Marina and Company is proprietary in nature and shielded from disclosure under the Oregon Public Records Law. The city council received a detailed briefing from Marina and Company in a notice executive session, and then in an open public session, heard the high-level policy recommendations and findings from the auditor, which included, the company was completely forthcoming and transparent with their detailed financial records, including proprietary information, that the Recology has been both consistent with the standards of the franchise as well as consistent with industry best practices, and that the information provided to the council is fully complete and accurate and is, has been consistent in their methodology over the course of time, which you've heard both Carl and Dave talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for that insight, that, again, I do remember us going through our, our auditors, and, and we know them well, and we know the standard and high level that they, they participate at. So again, I'll go back to you, Wendy, then.
Yeah. Actually, this might be a good follow-up question to what Jeff's debriefing. What, I know last year we had, we did additional checks, having that external audit, that's not a typical year. What is our internal process of evaluating to make sure we're doing our due diligence? And this might be either Jeff or Amanda evaluating the numbers and things like that. We're also evaluating the numbers internally on a typical year to make sure that we agree, right? I mean, that's our process, is looking at the agreement, making sure, like Amanda, probably you do that? Jeff or Amanda, either one?
Yes, we, we perform a review comparing it, comparing the data that they give us to the franchise agreement to ensure that it aligns with what the franchise agreement states.
And is all of the data you use to make that evaluation available to the public, or is it some of it proprietary?
Everything that Recology provided to staff for this rate review was, is in your packet.
Okay.
So the, the April one information and the July thirty-one information.
Okay. And I just had one other question, and it might be for Dave. The discrepancy between the months that they said in the franchise agreement, based on Mark's feedback, and February, why February was used as opposed to April, can you address that, Dave? It might have to do with the year and what's happening, but...
Sure. And, and it has a lot to do with, with the, the COVID situation. We were sitting around in mid-March trying to figure out how we should handle things this year. The first decision we made was, was to defer, a request to defer rates till at least September. And the second was to express some concern about what the CPI index might, might look like in the next few months and whether that would accurately reflect what we thought our costs would look like for the, for the upcoming rate year. So in this case, for, for the rest of, of twenty twenty and most of twenty twenty-one. So at that time, the, the most current information that we had available to us was the February index, which, again, I, I take full responsibility, this was not very clear in the letter that I wrote. So the March data is, was the data that was released in March, which was the February index. And I also could have made it more clear in that letter that this was not the normal process. So normally, if we were requesting a CPI adjustment, the, the city would get notice of that on April first with the, with the full financial information. And he would use the, the April CPI index, which is released in May, and notice goes to the city by June first for a July first effective date. So the, the other concern we had with waiting this year was that we didn't know for sure that the CPI index would even be published. We, there was a lot of concern in, sitting, again, in mid-March about whether there would be an April index, whether they'd have enough information, whether they'd be able to make all of the usual contacts that, that the government agency that, that produces the index would, would be able to do, to do the CPI and, and all of the different sub-indexes. And we, we use the CPI for the, for urban consumers, for the western region, for the B/C size class. So we're several orders down the row from, say, the main index. And so they, those, since those indexes have come out, and so looking back now, we could see what those numbers were, but again, where we were in March, and what we were, what we were attempting to do was to say, to take the most current information that we had available and use that. And again, I could have done a better job explaining in the letter that that was a departure from, from the franchise agreement and from our, from our usual procedures.
Amanda?
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, and just to follow up, if both parties to this agreement agree to do something that's different from what's outlined in the franchise agreement, both, as long as both parties agree, that is something you can do. So even though the franchise agreement does outline a specific month, particularly given the COVID nineteen scenario, staff understands why the, why Recology decided to go with a month where COVID nineteen didn't exist the way it does now. And further, what I would just mention is that I've done a lot of franchise rate reviews in a previous life, and whatever isn't increased now is going to be increased later. So particularly given that Recology... So particularly given that Recology has said that they're not going to be looking for a rate increase, I think they said until 2022. It's something to note that if the rate is lower, in all likelihood, you will be looking at a higher rate down the line, a higher rate increase down the line.
Okay, so Wendy, does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to move back over to Adam. You said that you had some further questions.
Yeah, my first question would be, I guess, for Carl on how the recycling market stabilized, given the rate increase that we did with that a couple of years ago. And the, you know, that you guys provided, it doesn't look like it's changed at all, but.
Yeah, so a quick answer on that. When we came into the city, I don't I don't have those notes, but memory serves correct, it had gone to $75 a ton for recycling. Might have been $65, $75 payment. I recall saying that the delta was about $110 for recycling. Truth is, even after those rate changes, that number even got up to $100. And, you know, of course, we we already had our arrangement with the city, so we didn't didn't bring it up. We do the best we can. And the city has done a great job being on the leading edge of having a bad bag ban gives us good material. People want to have it. People actually still kind of fight over it. But to your answer to answer your question, Adam, it's back to the last P O I saw was $75 a ton, which is still back to $110 delta again, on what it used to be on average back in the day. But there is talk that that China will be starting to reconsume more material. They they can't produce what they need with their internal volumes. So, you know, hopefully we'll see some softening happening soon.
Oh, yeah, my other question was you opened the your meeting or presentation tonight that you're still contributing to 30 plus nonprofits and charities. But in this attachment you guys sent, it looks like you've cut your contribution budget by 45%. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, it was reducing the amounts to a lot of them in order to make sure we just could contain those costs. There are some that we said, look, we're not going to, but it was looking at 500, changing it to 250. If you gave somebody 1,000, you reduced it to 500.
Okay.
And those are never tough. Those are always tough things for us to do during these challenging times. And we constantly work to try to figure out if we can find efficiencies to create opportunities to do the things that support this community that we love. I've said it many times, probably every time I'm in front of the city council that the strong community is a strong business community, which is good for Recology as well. So we want to do as much as we can to be supportive.
Yeah. So, I mean, I definitely appreciate everything Recology does for this town. And, you know, I understand the margins you need to operate in. It's just hard to pass a rate increase on to businesses and residential customers in these times. But at the same time, I want you guys to maintain margins and be profitable. So I'm just trying to further understand where your increased expenses are coming from. It looks like management and administrative services are both up about six and a half percent. And then your operational personnel went up 10 and a half percent. And if you removed remove those increases through efficiencies or or however you need to do that to not increase those, you wouldn't really need a need for this rate increase. Am I reading that correctly or?
I might defer to Dave on things that are that specific on on a on a higher end. Well, Dave, I'll let you respond to that.
Sure, the short answer for management and administrative services is those are computed based on a percentage of revenue. So if we project revenue to go up either from growth or from the impact of a rate adjustment, that would increase total revenue and thus increase that spending there. The those numbers aren't tied directly to a switch that we could turn on and off in the in the administrative office that would that would change those costs.
So that would be prorated to income, then, correct, Dave?
I'm not sure I caught that. Could you repeat that?
I'm saying that that would be prorated to administration via the increase in income. It's a it's a linear relationship.
That's correct.
Okay.
Dave, would the operational personnel on the labor side be the same?
Operational personnel is is one of the the main the main expense lines for us. And so your question was if we if we didn't project to have that those increases in our costs, would we we wouldn't need a rate adjustment, if I if I understand you correctly. I think the the short answer for that is that number one, we have our drivers are part of a union. And we have a union contract that spells out what what I think is is a reasonable adjustment for in their wages each year. And sometimes when you're looking at the actual and the difference between what we actually did in 2019 and what we're projecting to do, those numbers can change for a variety of reasons. For example, when we are short-staffed, we pay a lot more overtime than we than we are budgeted to pay. But we don't project to work that much overtime. When we have our operations supervisor or even operations manager have to jump behind the wheel to to get work done, their their salaried, so their that works out great for the for that line item. But the the drivers would prefer to to do that work if they're able to do it. We do have some restrictions on hours of service and other things that that limit how much overtime an individual driver can work. But that those those kinds of details do push those numbers around in in some cases, again, looking at the actual versus projections.
And I think I think one thing again, that that I did talk about in my original presentation. You know, I can look here and I can see that, you know, we have, you know, maybe half of the residents, 60, looks like 50%, 58% of residents have yard debris. So there's 42% that don't. I imagine there's some that just if you don't have a big yard. But one of the things that I mentioned in my opening comments is to make sure we remind people, you get that extra cart, you can probably cut your service down in half. There are a lot of folks out here that have a lot less service because they take advantage of that. I think some people, they just love making that trip, right? Every Saturday to the yard waste drop off and have their coffee and raise their rates $10, they're still going to show up and drink their coffee there. But, you know, I we we need to get back out here and remind folks again, there's so much opportunity with the rate structures we have and the different levels of service we have to say, give me that yard waste cart. I'm not going to throw it in there anymore because they're going to come around and pick it up. I don't even have to drive and bring it in. There's a lot, a lot of opportunity there. And I said too, the great thing about a company like Recology with employee ownership and putting more value into into your employees, they do go out into our community and they buy homes, they buy cars, they go to all the restaurants and spend their money in town here. And we're all proud of the fact that we all tried to do that even in these difficult times. So I think there's some educational work that we've just got to continue to stay at. And I think we've done a great job of communicating folks about what recycling looks like and gotten contamination to come down. And so we need to get some effective stuff out there to remind people. Get your get your yard waste cart, get your recycling cart. You don't have to carry that most expensive cart. You can probably cut it down.
So back to you, Adam. Have your questions been answered?
Yeah, they have. Appreciate the insight, Dave. And Carl, I would agree with you. We're on a biweekly cart because we utilize the recycling and the yard debris carts.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for keeping your stuff clean too, Adam.
And let's move to Kelly. Kelly, any questions from your perspective? I know she's on the phone, she's having problems, but.
Hey, I'm having Zoom problems tonight. In listening to all the Carl brought up in regard to the 10 and a half percent increase, my recollection is very much the same as his. I have no problems with that. His explanation of the using the February instead of a later amount. I March, is it March or July? I can understand how they would do that. So I really don't have any questions. I've looked at these many years now, like 16. And I think that Sol pretty much presented very much the way it has been in the past. And the explanations to me make sense.
Thank you, Kelly. I know we gave Mark Davis an opportunity to comment with his written testimony. My understanding is Brittany wanted to weigh in on this topic. And so Brittany, if you'd like to address the council again, under three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the council. I actually, I, after listening to everything, I understand what everyone is dealing with or trying to take into consideration. I still am of the belief as a citizen and speaking with many people in the community that we are not at a point where we should be giving increases to our citizens. And I just, I think everyone should just look really deep in their hearts before you guys do an I vote on this and make sure that you're taking into consideration. There are people that have yet to get their unemployment checks and many who did not get the $500 check that was available. So I just think any increase is going to be detrimental. So I'm just, that's my only other comment after listening to all the other testimony is I think we need to be also mindful of what are our citizens, which unfortunately, I really wish more people came to this call this evening to hear all of this. But I think there'd be more citizens wanting to know that their bill's going up. And I think and I encourage the council to hold off on this until more information and outcomes from our citizens. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. With that, any further discussion among council?
A quick question. Is this as far as process goes, if it wasn't unanimous on its first reading, the second reading would be at the next meeting?
Mayor, Councilor Garvin, this is simply a resolution. So it will either pass or fail based on the number of votes cast tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So we have before us this evening a Resolution 202053. And I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Mayor Wendy has a question.
Wendy, go ahead.
Yeah, just in the interest of, I know that the question about enough notice and enough people being able to view the information in the packet Brittany had brought up is we could also, could we choose to look at this resolution in the next meeting if the council wanted to do that without saying a nay vote on the resolution? Or how would you do that? What's the process for doing that? If we wanted to do that, I'm not saying that we do or not, but what's the process for that?
So I'll ask Amanda how we would approach that niggly.
Make a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, and so that's an option. We could talk about whether the city council would like to vote on this resolution, would like to have a discussion or would like to continue it to the next meeting are some options.
Could I make a comment?
Sure, Kelly. Oh, sorry. No, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
We haven't read Robert's rules yet, Wendy.
Yeah, thank you. I need that.
Well, I didn't know how else you'd know I wanted to do something, so sorry. I guess, I mean, we keep delaying things. And I'm truly not sure I see the point of it. Number one, they were due this rate increase like two months ago at least. So they've been very nice in working with us in regard to this. And we have a standard practice of putting out what the meeting is going to be about at a certain time. If people are interested, they go on the site, they look it up, and they come to the meeting. I just am hesitant to continue to delay things because people are frankly uninterested. I mean, maybe they should be, that's for sure. I I would rather see more people here tonight. But I mean, we have a procedure, it's standard, we do it all the time. And I just don't understand why we would necessarily need to hold this over for another meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I add on to that?
Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you. I appreciate kind of all this conversation that's happening in this in this around this and around the procedural parts of this as well as as well as 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 to whether or not it's an appropriate time to step back and 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 pause. And I think that the biggest thing that's come up for me when we've seen these issues delayed meeting to meeting is to me that that starts to feel more like politicking and less like governing. And that's what our job is to do here. And I agree with Council President Manke that while there is at times an increased interest right now in some things, we have a very standardized process. And so nothing here is is happening without citizen notification. This item, this was not a, there was no last minute. This was this has been a, as Council President said, this has been something we've been aware of for for many months. That's not to say that I I don't I don't like the timing of it because I don't. But this will fall under one of a number of things in my time here that I have not necessarily loved or for whatever reason, that, you know, the the scope of things that come before us are not necessarily all things on which we would choose to want to vote on at that moment. Certainly, it would be much more comfortable to delay this vote because nobody wants to increase rates, even 72 cents a month. Nobody wants to vote in that increase right now. But I think we we do have to take this at face value and and keep 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 a a certain amount of of structure, not just for the sake of structure, but because this is an agreement that the city of McMinnville is engaged in. And it's our obligation to regularly review and revise those recommendation or that, you know, these things as they come before us. So I just, I really, I do want to second what Council President Manke said that I think delaying, although it will personally make us feel better for not wanting to vote in an increase. And I'm not saying that that's the way it's going to go. I have no idea how the this body will vote. But and it's not to say that those aren't real considerations either. They they are real considerations. But when we're determining changes to to budgets and and all of these really broad scale financial decisions that impact so many of us, they they have to be decisions that are made from the head. They have to be thought about and and reviewed and studied and something that we've all had an opportunity to do. And I just, I am not of the mind frame of thinking that we can politic instead of govern. And I do feel like delaying a vote at this point would be doing that.
Thank you, Councilor. We do have a process in place, and that is I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-53. Are there any more comments? Hearing none, then I will ask for that motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all those in opposition opposing signify by saying nay. All those, uh, uh, in opposition, opposing, uh, signify by saying nay. And so, uh, we see Resolution 202053 passing unanimously this evening on a vote of four to zero. Uh, thank you for all the discussion, Carl, Dave, uh, Walter, thank you for being on the line. Again, we surely appreciate the partnership that we have with you and, uh, and the progress that you provide to our community. That takes us to, uh, Resolution 202054, which is appointing youth liaisons, liaisons to our planning commission and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. And, uh, with Heather being out tonight, we're going to have, uh, Jeff present and both Kelly and I had an opportunity to be a part of this so we can fill in. So go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, one of the initiatives this council has, um, tried to pursue over the last several years is to do a better job of, um, engagement and inclusion in a number of our boards and commissions. Uh, we have been specifically interested in identifying, uh, youth liaisons to a number of our committees and commissions. Uh, this is one of the issues that sort of ran aground on the rocks of COVID-19. We were prepared to do this, uh, this past spring. Uh, we had, uh, we had several applicants, um, um, to provide, uh, uh, youth, uh, representation on committees and commissions. Um, you'll have a resolution before you that would appoint, um, Ethan Downs as a, a youth liaison to the planning commission and would appoint Ukiah, Howler and Steiner as a youth liaison to the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Uh, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor and Council President Manke to talk a little bit more about the process that you used. Uh, I know that Ukiah is on the line. I think Ethan was at some point. He may no longer be with us. Um, and, uh, so turn it over to you, Mayor and Council President.
Thank you, Jeff, for that introduction. And again, uh, Council President Manke, Manke and myself and, uh, Heather Richards had an opportunity last week to have, uh, I thought, a very thorough interview, uh, with our two candidates. Um, Ethan this evening is working and he came on during one of his breaks and he waved to us all, but he needed to get back. And Ukiah is with us and she's had to, uh, sit through a long discussion. Uh, but again, I think it's one that's really good. Both of these youth have a tremendous desire to serve their community. And I'll tell you, I don't know that there's two more complicated, uh, committees to be on, the planning commission and the urban renewal advisory committee takes lots of work, that these two individuals, um, I think from my perspective have a desire, they have the support of their parents and these individuals are very, uh, very smart and did a great job in interviewing. And so it is with great pleasure that, uh, we had this opportunity to meet with them. And we gave them an opportunity. We shared, we had four opportunities for them to serve and we found where their passions lie and where they felt their opportunities to serve were. And, uh, both picked different committees and we were able to, uh, assign those committee assignments to their passions. And so Kelly, I'll just turn to you to see if you have anything else to, uh, add to the discussion.
Uh, I was very impressed with both candidates, both, uh, both of them really seemed excited about this and, and wanted to do it. I was kind of surprised that, uh, Ethan hung in there and stayed with the planning commission. We were very frank with him. We said, you know, three hour meetings at least, and, uh, you're going to have probably somewhere between three and five hours prep time. And he said, okay. So he is excited about this and I, uh, I think Ukiah is going to serve very well on the MIRAC committee. So it was, it was a pleasure to meet them both. They're both very, uh, intelligent young people and I look forward to seeing them on the committees.
And so just to share with everyone in our documents that are before you, uh, Ethan is going to serve on the planning commission for a two-year term expiring August 26, 2022. Ukiah is going to be serving on the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee for a true, a two-year term expiring August 26, 2022. And, uh, Ukiah, I think if you'd like to come on and just, uh, introduce yourself, uh, to the council, um, I, it won't take much. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do want to have them hear you. You've been before the council before, uh, representing other issues at the high school. We know you, but go ahead and just, uh, uh, kind of introduce yourself to the council.
Yeah. Um, my name is Yuki Ukiah and I'm going into 10th grade. And last fall I got acquainted with the city council when we introduced our climate emergency resolution that I'm still interested in, um, working with you all with, but that's another topic. Um, and I guess I'm interested in just learning more about city government and the different committees and more about McMinnville.
Absolutely. Again, we're excited and, uh, again, just to, uh, let people know how articulate you are. And, uh, again, you had a decision and you spent the weekend really reviewing the different opportunities you served and then got back to us, I think it was, uh, Sunday and picked what you wanted to do. And then I, uh, reached out, no, it was probably Friday and I reached out and gave you the opportunity. So with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 54. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? I, I had Sal, who was the other?
Remy.
Remy. Okay. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020 dash 54 passes unanimously this evening, five to zero. Uh, with that, uh, good discussion tonight. I think, uh, uh, you know, that which was in front of us, we were able to have, uh, and understand at a very deep level and, and having, uh, citizen participation and participation by, uh, um, the entities that we were representing, both, uh, Recology and the, the go-kart. Uh, so thank you this evening. And with that being said, I don't see any hands, so I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting this evening. Everyone remains safe, use, uh, your, uh, your mask, use, uh, social distancing and wash your hands often. So thank you all and have a good evening.
Good meeting. Thank you, Mayor.